All right, all right. Welcome to this 5:00 PM of the Sacramento City Council. I now call this meeting to order at 5:01 PM. Madam City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Kaplan will be absent. Councilmember Tao.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Talamontes.
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Here.
Councilmember Garrett is expected momentarily. Councilmember Jennings.
I'm here, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Vang.
Here.
And we may, the mayor may join us later. So Vice Mayor Maple.
I am here. Thank you so much. And Mayor Pro Tem Talamontes, will you please lead us in the land acknowledgement and the pledge of allegiance?
Please rise for the opening acknowledgements in honor of Sacramento's indigenous people and tribal lands. To the original people of this land, the Nisanom people, the Southern Maidu, Valley and Plains Miwok, Patwin-Wintune peoples, and the people of the Wiltown Ranche Ria, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe. May we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather together today in the act of practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous people, history, contributions, and lives.
Thank you. Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Talamontes. All right, so we're going to start off this evening with two very special presentations, which is always a great way to start a meeting, with the first being from Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Today, we are gathering to belatedly honor and amplify the significance of Digital Inclusion Week, which was observed on October 7th to 11th, so just a little while ago. And this year's theme was "Stronger Together: Mobilizing Towards Sustainability." This theme underscores the crucial role of collaboration in ensuring the longevity of the digital equity movement, where stakeholders are working to interconnect digital inclusion initiatives across our communities, sustaining the movement towards long-term solutions. Digital Inclusion Week is an annual awareness, recognition, and celebration week organized by the National Digital Inclusion Alliance and its 1,800-plus affiliates nationwide. And today, we are joined by the Capital Region Coalition for Digital Inclusion, representing over 40 organizations who are dedicated to delivering digital inclusion services to bridge the digital divide and increase digital equity throughout the city of Sacramento. Digital is, in that sentence, a lot. I'm very proud of making through that. The Coalition works to support members of our communities across all of our districts, frankly, colleagues, by enabling them to participate in the digital age through access to affordable devices, the internet, and digital literacy training. This work is critical for all individuals today because, as we know, particularly since COVID, many education, employment, healthcare, and other governmental services are now primarily accessed online, and too many households continue to lack adequate access to these resources across our various districts. So with that, I would love to bring up the members who are here from the Capital Region Coalition for Inclusion, and to particularly welcome Mr. Kevin Flash and Dante Early from the United Way Capital Region to speak to us for a few moments about the importance of this week and your incredible work in our communities. So thank you. Everybody come on up if you would like.
Welcome.
Yeah, you have a whole crew here with you.
Yeah, we do, we do. And it's wonderful. Thank you, Katie, and thank you, other council members, for recognizing the importance of the work that we're doing here and being partners with us in this work. Digital inclusion is so critical because it does provide computers, it provides affordable internet, and it provides that technical support for digital literacy that so many of our community members need. I would just like to point out, like, one example of that. Sacramento City College offers some online classes, and I just ask you, do you know how, what percentage of their classes that they offer online? It's 50%.
Oh.
Half of the classes that Sacramento City College is offering this year are online classes. And so if you can imagine a young person who wants to go to college from Oak Park, from Del Paso Heights, up from Natomas, if they don't have a computer, if they don't have affordable internet, if they don't have some tech support and digital literacy to help them get there, they're left out of half of the classes that they could potentially take. So here today, we really do have the Coalition so well-represented. We have members from Valley Vision, United Way, Sacramento State, Sacramento Public Library, SADA, Sagent, so so many organizations here really represent that this is a collective. This is working together, working together to help you serve the constituents that you're in. So I really wanted to say thank you for the recognition, a heartfelt thank you because it means so much.
Thank you. And just really quickly, I want to acknowledge our colleague from across the river, Dr. Dante Early, City Councilmember for West Sacramento.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you. I'm going to say just a couple of words. So on behalf of the Coalition, and of course, United Way, I want to take a moment to actually commend you all for this official recognition of Digital Inclusion Week here in Sacramento. At United Way California Capital Region, we're committed to mobilizing our community, just as this Coalition is, to action so that all can thrive. And to thrive in this modern day, we truly believe in the power of technology. I appreciate your leadership and your vision, and again, your acknowledgement of the importance of digital equity and inclusion for all of our communities. In today's world, and as we heard Kevin just say, access to technology isn't just about convenience, it's a necessity. From education and job opportunities to even healthcare, and of course, here, civic engagement, right? In order to truly participate in society, you need access to technology. Yet too many of our neighbors still face barriers to that access, whether it's because of economic disparities, a lack of devices, or gaps in digital literacy, and those barriers prevent them from reaching their full potential. Through highlighting Digital Inclusion Week, you're taking a critical step toward bridging that divide, and this week isn't just about raising awareness, it's about shining a light on the real challenges faced by so many in our community and showcasing the solutions that can make a difference. It's about driving meaningful change, about creating a more connected, equitable, and informed Sacramento, and that's powerful. And so again, on behalf of the entire Coalition, thank you guys so much for doing this.
Thank you all so much. I know we were hoping to bring them up for a photo, and some of you colleagues have little signs next to you. Not everybody, but we were hoping that you could hold those up during the photo. That was a little idea here that the Coalition proposed, so yeah, we'll quick.
It's a great idea. Come on in, we'll open this up for you, and we'll take a photo.
Do it. Um. I see the city councils, I'm just gonna.
She's got permission.
Hopefully not give you trouble.
As we all say, ask for forgiveness.
Good to see you.
I'll take another sign.
Yeah, of course. Congratulations.
Hi.
Yeah, me too.
You should get a new hold sign.
Oh, I'm okay.
Everybody, I'm gonna get front of the days.
No.
Does everybody have a sign? Okay, um, do you want more signings?
Councilmember Jennings, if you could also sign up a little bit.
Good? Okay, so first one, right here, and one, two, three, and then, one, two, three.
One more, one, two, three.
This turned out so cute.
Amazing. I could grab those, appreciate it, thank you.
All right, we'll give them just a moment to file out here.
Of course.
Do you, if you want your sign, you're more than welcome to keep it, yeah. All right, thank you so much, folks. We really appreciate it, an important resolution. We appreciate Councilmember Valenzuela for bringing that forward. Our next and final presentation, special presentation, Mayor Steinberg regrets he can't be here right now, he may join us a little bit later, but we'll be doing this on his behalf, but as always, these presentations are on behalf of the mayor and the entire city council, and they reflect, you know, ways that we want to contribute to the community and give recognition. And so for this very special presentation, we are going to be talking about Sacramento Poetry Week. So we will be presenting a, the city resolution to our city poet laureate, who I saw in the crowd here, Andrew Defai. Over the past years, he's jumped, he's jump-started Sacramento Poetry Day, and we're excited that he has chosen to expand it this year. He has, both Andrew and the local poetry community are bringing poetry to us through a partnership with SACRT and the Crocker to provide free rides on transit, where you can share a poem with your driver or fair inspector, and you get free admission to the Crocker on Saturday, October 26th, as well as poetry pop-ups at SACRT stations, sorry, and poetry slams, and I'm sure you'll get more into this. We're also partnering with the SAC Native American Health Clinic to provide mental health supports for poets and artists, K-12 curriculum to bring poetry into schools, and so much more. And so I want to give you an opportunity to say a few words, and then maybe I'll read from this resolution. Please, please go ahead.
Absolutely, yeah. First off, thank you to all the poets that are in the spot for showing up, this for And thank y'all. This is a huge honor. Some of y'all have known for a very long time, and you've seen the progression from yelling on street corners, right? And in poetry, the words matter. This may be my last time to address this dais as poet laureate, so I want to take this time to do what I'm supposed to and advocate for poets and poetry. In my five years as laureate, our city's poetry community has become a model for cities around the country. Be it the codes of conduct, the innovative mental health initiatives, or the Sacramento-based poetry curriculum we created and made available for free, we have lived up to the title of Poetry Capital of California, which is a title that you all declared us in one of these resolutions two years ago. Because in poetry, the words matter. We've done our part. We put art in the city's schools, we made it representative and accessible, we paid artists, I've paid poets over $50,000 in my time as poet laureate. We are the creative economy. Right now, we've got the eyes of the nation on us, and I could show you the DMs to prove it. Meanwhile, I know poets that have opened schools and organized feeding hungry people in the city weekly. I know poets that are helping untangle the gang wars that have our city in knots, and those same poets are trying to figure out where they're going to lay their heads every night. I make $3,000 as poet laureate a year, in the capital of the fifth-largest economy in the world. I just organized a citywide activation that would reach over a million people with a free tool for self-empowerment, mental health, and deeper community connection if you all support it, like this resolution says that you're gonna. But too often, there isn't money in the budget for poetry, like there is for military equipment for the police or homeless sweeps. You should hear those poems, and the poems of the youth declaring their purpose and place in our city, and the poems of the parents finding their way with no roadmap, and poems from the elders finding joy and hope to hold on. The whole city is a verse if you learn to listen to it like one. You can see the poetry in motion when hopes and dreams become real as we speak ourselves into existence in Sacramento. Thank y'all for a commitment to valuing and supporting our poets in Sacramento and paving the way for generations to come. I appreciate y'all from the bottom of the bottom. Thank you from all the poets in Sacramento. We appreciate you.
Thank you so much. I thought you had more to say.
I mean, always, but you could come out, go to sacramentopoeetryweek.com and come to one of our many events all throughout the week.
Awesome. And I just want to give a shout out, because you do such a great job of connecting to, have you on Facebook, and one of the things that you did was do a call-out about how do we get this into schools, and I was really amazed, I wasn't shocked, because I know Sacramento, everybody knows everybody, and everybody wants to be a connector and is a connector, and then remember people that were on there that were saying, hey, here's a contact at this school, and this school, and this school, and yeah, I wonder how many schools you think you'll be in?
A ton. We have not got a full count, but if you want to shed some happy tears, and you need it today, I can show you a video from the Zoom we did with kids earlier today that I spent like a good half an hour just tearing up about. So, yeah, come and check us out, come, come see what we're doing in your district.
I'm always in for a good cry. So I'm just, I'm not going to read this whole thing, but I am going to give this to you, but I will read this last part. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and the council of the city of Sacramento, the city of Sacramento recognizes October 22nd, 2024, as Sacramento Poetry Week, the beginning, I'm sure. It shall be officially observed every year to honor and celebrate the powerful work of Sacramento poets and the transformative role poetry plays in our community. The city is committed to support poets in this vital work, ensuring poetry continues to inspire creativity, healing, and empowerment throughout Sacramento, and we couldn't do it without you. Thank you. First, we'll hear some comments, and then we'll do a photo. I was excited. Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you very much. Just want to say, appreciate your work that you're doing and the impact that you're making. I heard you say for generations to come, but the generations that have already come and left us, some of them, like my Uncle Tommy, had 3,000 poems in his head, and he would go around sharing it with all the generations to come, and all the seniors in the senior citizen homes, and he, he made an impact because of the poems that he had in his head that he shared with everybody. So I know your work, I know the impact that it has, and want to do anything we can to support you. So on a personal basis, I'd love to get together with you and see what we can do in order to make sure the kids understand the power of poetry and the power of the spoken word. So want to get together with you. Good job.
Beautiful. Let's do it.
Right. Mayor Pro Tem Talamontes.
So when I was in middle school, I wanted to be a poet, and I would write poems in my notebook. I have no creative inch in my body, so I was very unsuccessful. Nonetheless, I love poetry and the people with a creative talent, so just kudos to you and everyone being here for, like, just highlighting poetry in Sacramento, and really shining a light on this beautiful art of yours. And it just kind of reminded me of when I used to work at Grant High School, no Grant, it was Burbank High School, I had a teenager that, her name was Angel Silva, and she really liked poetry. And at that time, I was really plugged into Soul Collective, and Soul Collective did all those poetry nights, and so I took her to Soul Collective, and she won like the youth poet of the year that year, and I was so proud of her, and like, knowing like, God, that was like eight years ago or so, and where we're at today with a council resolution and everything that you have going on, like, you, Soul Collective, and everyone that made this happen have come such a long way, so just want to commend you on your work and your perseverance. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Great words. All right, any of my other colleagues wishing to speak? With that, love to present you with this down here, and with.
Yeah, if we got any poets in this spot right now, y'all could come up here and be in this.
Aren't all of us poets in our hearts? Not me, definitely not me. And apparently not the Pro Tem either.
All right, now with, now with all the good feels, we get to start, start the city's business. Colleagues, is there anything from the consent calendar that members wish to have voted on separately or discussed separately? Comments, questions?
Motion approved.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? That passes unanimously. For the record, Vice Mayor, we do have no speakers on the, on the consent calendar. Thank you so much for that. Moving on to item 17, our Stockton Boulevard Plan Environmental Impact Report. Welcome.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and council members. I'm very excited to be here today. My name is Elizabeth Boyd, and I'm a senior planner in our community development department. Tonight, I'll provide an overview of the Stockton Boulevard Plan, its major components, the Environmental Impact Report, or EIR, that goes with it, and the next steps for implementation. Following this presentation and discussion, staff recommends that council pass resolutions to certify the EIR, approve the water supply assessment, and adopt the Stockton Boulevard The Stockton Boulevard Plan, led by the Neighborhood Development Action Team, or NDAT, is a community-centered approach to revitalizing Stockton Boulevard in a way that benefits the people and businesses that currently live and occupy the corridor and surrounding neighborhoods. It consists of two main components. A specific plan, which would streamline housing development along the four-and-a-half-mile commercial corridor of Stockton Boulevard, stretching from Alhambra in the north to 65th Street in the south, and a neighborhood action plan, which captures community priorities and priority actions for Stockton Boulevard and the 23 surrounding neighborhoods. Stockton Boulevard was selected as the city's first planning effort by NDAT because of investments like Aggie Square and streetscape improvements coming to an area that has been historically disinvested. NDAT uses a community-centered approach to revitalization with a focus on racial equity. The Stockton Boulevard Plan is a partnership with the community to capture priorities and address concerns that investment would lead to gentrification and displacement. In our community engagement, we really reflected three different goals. One was to capture, capture the community's voice, strengthen neighborhood capacity, and foster local ownership. We worked to meet these goals holistically by hiring locally, recognizing the expertise of residents and local leaders, going where people were gathered, providing engagement in multiple languages and contexts, and providing stipends to local resident experts who've worked alongside staffing consultants. Community members were key to shaping the process and the resulting document. City staff created the NOW Award-winning Community Ambassador Program to connect with people of many cultural and language backgrounds who reside and work along the corridor, knowing that relationship building should just, should not be just during the planning process, but extend far into the future. The resident planning team, composed of well-known and diverse local leaders, worked with the city from the very beginning to guide the planning process. The anti-displacement values came from them to guide every other part of the plan. The engagement team collected ideas and feedback from local residents and businesses. After hearing concern and confusion about what the plan would include, we introduced an interim community-working version of the Stockton Boulevard Plan, which allowed for more extensive outreach before a public review draft was published. Our engagement team reached careholders through multilingual pop-up events at grocery stores and the library, meetings with multicultural leaders, community celebrations, office hours, translated materials, virtual community conversations, online document review, and interactive workshops. The efforts of the engagement team resulted in extensive public comments on the working version. Staff took these and revised the plan so that the public review draft addressed the community's concerns. The public review draft was released from September 29th, 2023, to May 15th, 2024. Overall, the comments we received were minimal, which shows the importance of the community working version and the associated engagement. And now I'd like to provide you with a few key elements. We distilled the community's priorities into specific themes across the various planned topics. From there, we relied on the priorities to craft the plan's policies and action strategy to ensure that the plan reflected what the community had said was most important to them. Each topical chapter was summarized to describe the goals, relevant anti-displacement values, community priorities, city policies, plans, and programs that helped to address the topic, and the priority actions. We were actually working on the Stockton Boulevard Plan at the same time as the 2040 general plan was being drafted. Therefore, we had the unusual opportunity to influence general plan, land use, and policy to ensure that both plans were consistent on day one. In 2021, our colleagues in Public Works came to council with a bold plan to reshape this corridor into one more friendly to the people who traverse and live along the corridor. We have incorporated this transportation plan by reference into the Stockton Boulevard Plan. One of the major policy shifts between the 2021 corridor plan and NOW was captured in Policy M-1.2 of the 2040 general plan, where the city changed from the 2035 general plan policy to balance the diverse needs of pedestrians, bicyclists, transit riders, and motorists to prioritizing mobility, comfort, health, safety, and convenience for those walking, followed by those biking and riding transit ahead of design and operations for those driving. Because of this shift, our colleagues in Public Works are able to be more ambitious in their work. Recently, our colleagues went over $5 million to refine the transportation plan and study bringing bus rapid transit to the corridor in partnership with SAC County and Sacramento Regional Transit. Jesse Gothin, the project manager in Public Works, is available here to answer any specific questions about that separate effort. The implementation chapter explains how both a specific plan and neighborhood action plan can be implemented, including a short summary of the findings of the infrastructure study and potential funding mechanisms, such as an enhanced infrastructure financing district, or EIFD. Accompanying the plan is its EIR, which describes the potential environmental impacts associated with the plan's implementation, as well as ways to address or minimize significant impacts. This summer, the draft EIR was circulated for public review from June 21st to August 7th, and during that period, written comments from six public agencies were submitted, which represented only minor clarifications. Similar to what we have done for the Forward Together Action Plan, after this plan is adopted, NDAT, in partnership with our Office of Arts and Culture, will be offering $700,000 in seed funding to support community-led implementation of the plan. We currently have a survey out to build awareness of the upcoming pilot grant, funding opportunity, and to seek feedback on how the program should be adjusted to serve this area. We are encouraging people to take the survey and pass it on to others. Mikel Devila, in our Office of Innovation and Economic Development, is available to answer questions about the pilot grant. Tonight, staff recommends that city council adopt the Stockton Boulevard Plan, certify its EIR, and accompany water supply assessment. Following its adoption, we will implement the plan, including releasing the Stockton Boulevard, NDAT pilot grant, and tracking progress on the identified actions, with the goal of fostering equitable growth and enhancing quality of life for residents and businesses along and around Stockton Boulevard. That concludes staff's presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you so much. We will do public comment at this time. So thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I have four speakers on this item. Dan Weitzman, Frank Louie, Susan Starich, and Lynette Hall. Welcome, Mr. Weitzman.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to the plan, thank you to the city. This is a great start of momentum on the Boulevard. Those of you who have been on the Boulevard know how exciting things are happening there, and that this is just the beginning of a growth, and we see the renaissance of Stockton Boulevard coming. I am a representative and a treasurer of the Stockton Boulevard Partnership, and we're just excited that things are happening, and big, big, more exciting things to come. Thank you.
Frank Louie, and is Elaine speaking with you?
I'd like to also call up my board chairman, Elgin Bradley, because, again, this is a Vice Mayor Maple, Mayor Steinberg, who's not in attendance, council members. Again, my name is Frank Louie. I'm the executive director for the Stockton Boulevard Partnership. We support the Stockton Boulevard Plan. The comprehensive plan really addresses the housing shortage, the mixed-use development, prioritizing funding and resources to enhance the quality of life for the current and future residents and stakeholders, investment in the public transportation, the future BRT along the Route 51, which is, as you know, is the most heavily traveled, highest ridership in our region. The Stockton Boulevard Plan addresses, you know, the close to 100 vacant lots that we have on the Boulevard that have been identified, for some, a lot of them have been identified with the mixed-use housing component. Aggie Square, obviously, is going to be our economic driver for our enhanced growth in our region. The Stockton Boulevard, our aging quarter, we're going to get, you know, new and investment from both the public and the private sector. I just really, it means a lot to us. I just really, it means a lot to us because myself, as a business owner and a longtime stakeholder, my board chairman, we both, together, we did the math the other day. I think we have, like, a total of 74 years on the Boulevard, and this is just a major transformation of the Boulevard that we've seen in our time. And I just want to thank Mayor Steinberg for his vision and leadership these past eight years, beginning with that initial meeting with Chancellor May as a dream.
Your time is complete. Did Elgin also want to speak? Your time is complete. Did Elgin want to speak?
Okay. Hi, y'all. My name is Elgin Bradley. I'm the chairperson of the Stockton Boulevard Partnership Board of Directors. I moved to the Stockton Boulevard in 1979. Forty-five of those years that Frank mentioned, 74, I can account for. And I've seen the worst of Stockton Boulevard, and now I'm very, very encouraged with what it is that's taken place, the attention that Stockton Boulevard is getting. And I actually and honestly believe that the best of Stockton Boulevard is in our future. I want to thank you guys for your interest. I really appreciate the fact that the council member who represents the district, the vice mayor who represents the northern part of Stockton Boulevard, and the rest of the council members, we really thank for your interest in the Boulevard, the commitment that you're willing to make, and we're really looking forward to the revitalization of Stockton Boulevard. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. And really want to also just quickly acknowledge the work that the Stockton Boulevard Partnership has done to bring the community together and talk with everyone, so, thank you. Next speaker is Susan with Mutual Housing, and then Lynette Hall will be our final speaker.
Hi, everyone. My name is Susan Boskyl Starcovich, and I'm here on behalf of Mutual Housing California. We're proudly Sacramento's most active nonprofit affordable housing developer, on track to add 1,000 units of affordable housing by 2026. Our organization's mission is to develop, operate, and advocate for sustainable housing that builds strong communities through resident participation and leadership development. As the Director of Community Engagement, each day, I see firsthand how the inclusion of residents in the development and revitalization of their home communities makes the outcomes better for all residents, both those residing in their neighborhood now and future generations to come. Just last Friday, we celebrated the opening of our newest senior housing community in the rail yards, and the mayor and council member Venezuela were there when our resident speaker spoke about the impact of housing near transit centers and with thoughtful design to support community building and access to local businesses. And she's not alone in expressing such a real-world impact. The city, and specifically the office of District 6 Councilmember Eric Gara, has done a phenomenal job working with mutual housing through all the phases of developing the Stockton Boulevard Plan, with active participation by residents at our mutual housing at Lemon Hill community and other communities adjacent to the Boulevard. This summer, we opened mutual housing on the Boulevard, another 127-unit community just south of Stockton Boulevard Plan area, and we broke ground on San Juan Apartments, adding to the affordable housing stock on the Boulevard. In alignment with our mission and in support of our residents, we would like to express our deep support of the Stockton Boulevard Plan and request that you fully adopt it this evening so that, together, we can continue to partner on inclusive economic development in the city of Sacramento. Thank you.
And Lynette Hall is our final speaker on this item. Welcome.
Lynette Hall, resident of District 5 in Oak Park, in support of this project. Just super excited to be able to work on this project as staff, but more importantly, to benefit as a resident. To see how community came up with anti-displacement strategies to really support the folks that are living there now so that they're not displaced has been really amazing, specifically around incentivizing infill housing. Not only do I own a home there, I also own property, so the chance of being able to build something to leave to my daughter, to build generational wealth, is something that I'm very, very excited about. Excited about what we're going to do with some of the vacant spaces. This is the second time that we have adopted a plan, and more importantly, to have implementation grants to support that plan. And so, I am just excited, as a resident of D5, to see what is in store. So, again, urging you all to support and adopt this plan, and just want to thank staff for all of their hard work. They've worked on this plan for a long time, so, super happy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. And thank you for all your work as well on this. It's not remiss. We definitely see the work that you're doing on Stockton Boulevard, and we appreciate it. And I think the most important, or the most appropriate person to pass it over to would be Councilmember Gara for all your years of work on this and finally seeing it come to fruition. Pretty exciting.
Well, thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Again, it's what an exciting day it is today, and I just want to, you know, thank everyone who's been involved, from our community partners, our city staff, our leaders on the council as well. I go back to when I first decided to run for office. We had a number of stores closing. I mean, the issues on human trafficking were significant. At that time, I had met Terry Galvano, who's over there, and she and one of our own police officers at the time were saying, "We need to find a better way to address, you know, the human trafficking that's happening on the Boulevard and to address the safety issues, and think about it in a productive way." And all of this, you know, came, and I got to say that one of the best actions we could have done as a council was to fund the Economic Development Department that created the ENDAT. And it was a different way of thinking, because it was a time when I remember sitting down with their city staff, and after talking to all our property owners and Legano Sito over here and others, to say, you know, "We need people in our own city to be linking and talking together and not serial communication." And to be able to do that, and the Economic Development Department was the best suited for that, to be able to link community with our different agencies who are trying to create public safety. And you see that. You see that on Marysville Boulevard, you know, as well now with their plan. But the fact that Stockton Boulevard happened, and I want to, you know, I do want to thank, you know, the folks at UC Davis and Aggie Square for their commitment moving forward, but this didn't start because of that. This started because the neighborhood itself wanted something different. You know, we wanted to see how we grow our own, how we move forward. The shot in the arm definitely was the university, but even before then, we were recognized that the fatalities on the roadways were significant. The fatalities were affecting low-income seniors, people of color, kids who had to cross Stockton Boulevard to go to the neighboring school, the lack of housing opportunities in the area, and longtime committed folks who'd lived in the area, like Dan Weitzman, who I think bought his first house after Sac State, you know, over in Tahoe Park, were all committed to do there, to improving it. You know, the fact that it's been that level of commitment and recognizing all of the different diversity of the Boulevard, it was also important, from the Little Saigon area to, you know, Elgin Bradley's touch of class, all the way up to the North area with Frank Louie's restaurant, which, you know, Frank was great. He was always hosting us at the Neighborhood Association to bring community members together. That level of work is what was created the ENDAT, this idea of creating specific plans and to create the transportation plan that led to the Stockton Boulevard specific plan. But what's exciting about this plan is that it's going to create, it's going to set the stage for 4,000 new housing units, a support for small businesses. And we already see that happening now. While other areas of the city might have some challenges, this area is moving on itself. You know, the fact that, I think, Mutual Housing brought up Lemon Hill. Lemon Hill's community got so engaged on traffic fatalities after they had one of their grandmothers run over right there on Lemon Hill and Stockton Boulevard, that they also got engaged and said, "We need to figure out how to make this better." And I really want to thank Mutual Housing because from, you know, San Juan, Lemon Hill, down to South Stockton, Cornerstone, they've committed to that area to say, "We can revive it, we can make it a better place." And to see also the uniqueness of local small businesses popping up has been great. One challenge, though, with that is the infrastructure. You know, in order to achieve the 4,000 units, we have a huge gap in the infrastructure to be able to do that. And right now, if we were to try to accomplish the plan, we could only get to half of that, to half of those needs. So, these are the things that we never talk about, the sewer water, the electrical, the ability to be able to fund the roadways. Those are also challenges. This plan sets us up to create an EIFD that can help us keep that revenue and that money local. I am very happy that the county, thanks to Supervisor Serna, started and said, "Hey, we're going to do, we're going to match the EIFD," although I do have concerns, and I'll chat with them about them taking half of that EIFD and putting it back into the County General Fund, but at least it's a step forward in moving together on how we improve an area of the city that's half-city, half-county. The issue of roadway transit and safety, you know, this plan is great, it's that step, but until we pass that next transportation measure to fund it and make sure that we get those intersections, then this still holds us back. And I'm very proud that even though we're not waiting for that transportation measure, that we see people investing in making that happen. I want to finally say, you know, close by saying that this is, you know, that it took a lot of support. At first, there was a lot of objection to it. There was concern about changing the dynamics, about housing on the Boulevard, about looking at reducing lanes and miles, but we did have a continuous level of support from our previous District 6 councilmember, Mayor Steinberg there, to our previous District 5 councilmember, Jay Sheneer, to our current councilmember, Katie Maple, to say, "Hey, we can think differently and move differently with that." There is one aspect here that I'd like staff to come up because, and it goes back to transportation safety and traffic safety. And I want to make sure that the plan goes a little further on making sure that we include a directive to the city to begin to do that. And so, my understanding is that there's some suggested language for policy area E3 to be able to, you know, hone in on the point on reducing the speeds, to making sure that we have, you know, bus rapid transit, and addressing those problematic areas.
Thank you. So, I'm getting the presentation to come back up again. We worked with your office to, you know, talk through a policy that would be helpful to point to the work that our colleagues in Public Works are doing, and so, I'll read it out, and if you make the motion, then we will include that into the specific plan after it is, when it's adopted. Okay? Well, I can read it out. It was up there.
It was up there, then it went away.
Well, I'll read it from here. Oh, there it is.
There it is.
So, we'll add it to Chapter 8, Environment, Public Health and Safety. Policy E3, Transportation Planning, Continue to Evaluate Physical Improvements to the Corridor to Facilitate Pedestrian, Bicycle, and Transit Use. Physical improvements could include lane reductions, lane reallocations, bus rapid transit, additional crossings, and other methods to increase transportation safety, mobility, and accessibility. And I have checked with our Public Works colleagues, and they feel like this would be, you know, consistent with what they're doing, and, you know, it's consistent with the general plan and the specific plan.
Well, thank you, Elizabeth. I appreciate that, and thank you for all your, you know, your commitment and your work with the community there. You know, Mayor, I will open and close the public hearing on this item and move the item with the amended language for policy area E3 that focuses this critical transportation planning and safety piece on the Boulevard. With that, thank you very much. I appreciate everyone. I think the community here deserves a big round of applause for their long work.
Thank you, Councilmember Geta, for championing Stockton Boulevard, along with Vice Mayor Maple, your predecessor, Councilmember Sheneer. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I really appreciate it, and I had some comments prepared, but now I just get to say ditto. Great job. You hit all the points and things that I wanted to mention. So, I'm just going to speak off the cuff for a little bit that, you know, I live on the other side of Stockton Boulevard in the Oak Park area, along with my colleague, Don here, Lynette Hall, and I love that community. The neighbors love that community, and they're really excited about the projects that are coming down on Stockton Boulevard. I want to shout out our mayor, who has talked about inclusive economic development for years. In fact, shout it from the rooftop to anyone who will listen in the grocery store, and that energy and that attention leads to the real-life projects and things that we're seeing now. It leads to things like Aggie Square, it leads to things like the 1,000 planned housing units on Stockton Boulevard, it leads to things like new businesses, it leads to things like bus rapid transit, and protected bike lanes, and all the things that we want to see along Stockton Boulevard. And what it all comes out to is a new vision. It's a new vision, and it's really exciting because for, now that there's anything wrong with this, I think, you know, our downtown core is our economic driver as a city, and I'm always going to be a proponent of increasing economic development there, but not at the expense of everywhere else, too. We can do that and, and Mayor Steinberg was one of the first people to come out and say, "We got to do all of it. We got to do Stockton Boulevard, we got to do Broadway, we got to do Franklin." And so, now, we're seeing the real-life action that goes behind that, and I'm glad to take the torch, along with my colleagues here, and continue that action so that we can see what it can come in the future. And I remember when we were on a bus tour with Congresswoman Matsui and others, one of the things I talked about is, "How do we make a city for young people? How do we make a city where people not only want to go to school here, but stay here and have jobs here and raise families here?" And this is what you do. You create opportunities for people to walk and bike and go to entertainment districts and more restaurants and more everything, you know, and the housing especially. And so, that's all coming to fruition in this plan, and so, I couldn't be more grateful for all the years of work that went into this long before I was here, and I recognize that with my colleagues and our incredible city staff. Thank you so much. Really excited to second this and to move it forward today, and just know that I'm a partner as we move this forward on Stockton Boulevard. Thank you.
I just want to add a little bit because, you know, this is where I chose to make my last state-of-the-city address, and it was intentional. And I'm not going to repeat the speech, it was 50 minutes. Way too long. But I do want to make a point about Measure U for a moment, okay? Which, in some ways, has been maligned over the years, right? Did it actually live up to its purpose? Well, I talked about this this morning. It was a general tax, and so, it has understandably supported a whole range of city services, and arguably, that second half cent is saving us from real fiscal Armageddon. And this project is an example. The Neighborhood Development Action Teams, as part of the Department of Economic Development, is part of fulfilling the Measure U promise, because this is where the money's coming from, that additional increment of money, whether it's on the so-called general fund side or the Measure U side. And I, you know, everything I say now is for posterity and for President and future colleagues, but I will say, this is my first day, and I'm going to say it my last day. Investing city dollars, whether it's through Measure U, through EIFD, through any of these financing mechanisms, in inclusive economic development, where there isn't necessarily a direct, short-term financial return, is every bit as important as investing in the all-important core city services. And in fact, there's a relationship between the two, because if we do not build up these commercial corridors in these neighborhoods and enhance the economic base, we're going to be chasing our tail when it comes to budgets and paying for those core services. It's so basic, and we're making strides in progress. It's still a struggle because of the cost of government, frankly, which is also understandable because we want to make sure that we pay our hard-working public servants, for example, what it is they deserve, but these are vital investments. And we were able to do even more, obviously, through the American Rescue Plan one-time basis, and the great challenge and opportunity for the next mayor and council is to find a way to continue these kinds of investments and enhance them, because that will be good and great for long-forgotten corridors and neighborhoods, and will also bring more money into the general fund for the core services that the people expect us to fund. And I'm sorry if I repeat myself, but it's at the core of what I think our city is rapidly becoming. This is about equity, it's about economic opportunity, it's about young people, it's about workforce, and it's about public safety, and it's about affordable housing, and so, this is wonderful. And Eric and Katie are right, if I may, the one thing, though, that we need to really focus on is enhancing the opportunity for more infrastructure. And it's not easy for a city with all these And it's not easy for a city with all these demands, right? That's why we've got countywide sales tax measures to consider. That's why we have to be aggressive, working with any partner we can find to go after more state and federal grant opportunities. Don't feel like we have to do it all alone because we can't and maybe shouldn't. This is, at Stockton Boulevard, it's the template here. Not that these other corridors are, they're beautiful and just as deserving, but the fact that UC Davis is here and comes across, and we have this signature project, now let's show what this corridor and the neighborhoods can and must be. I just love this, and I cannot wait to see what happens over the course of the next, you know, three to five to 10 years, and to look back and to say, the work that you're all doing, the staff and the community, you paved the way for this. So thank you so, so much. Appreciate it. It's great. We've got a motion, we've got a motion in a second. Love it. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Oppose, abstain. It's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you very much, everybody. Let us move to the final item of the early evening, and that is the Sacramento County Transportation Mitigation Fee Program.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg, members of the council. I'm Lucinda Wilcox, Chief Assistant Director of Public Works. This item is an update of the countywide transportation mitigation fee. This fee is a component of Measure A, the current countywide transportation sales tax program, and it requires all agencies to collect this fee on new development to support the Measure A program. The Adams Night is an update of the NEXA study that legally supports the fee program. So the Sacramento Transportation Authority, which administers Measure A, prepared the update to this NEXA study. It's the first update since Measure A took effect in 2009. It results in some restructuring of the fees, so some go up slightly, some go down slightly, and this new fee structure will take effect on January 1st. So the STAs unanimously approved the NEXA study in July, and it has received no opposition. I also want to acknowledge STA staff for being very collaborative during the preparation of the NEXA study. They agreed to include provisions to reduce fees for transit-oriented development and other development less reliant on cars, and the fees always exempted low-income housing. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Bagueta, are you on this one?
Yes, I was just going to go ahead and open and close the public hearing and appreciate our Public Works staff on this issue, and I hope that we dive a little more in also on future STA issues. Thank you, Lucinda, for your good work. Thanks.
Vice Mayor, very good. Do we have public testimony?
I have no speakers on this item.
All right. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstained. Thank you, Lucinda, very, very much. That does conclude the formal agenda for this late afternoon. I'm sorry that I missed some of the celebration earlier. I appreciate it, Vice Mayor, you leading that. Council ideas and questions? Mayor Protem?
I have an AB 1234 report. I went to the League of Cities from Wednesday to Friday, did some public financing law workshops, Housing Jeopardy, and got up really early, realized I am not an 8:15 a.m. workshop morning person. Less than looking for the next time. But it was really nice meeting other elected officials from the regions and learning about their challenges as larger cities and small towns, especially small towns that rely heavily on tourism. But yeah, it was a great time networking with others, spending time with city staff. And I also just want to give a huge shout-out to Mike Testa and Visit Sacramento and Danny Hayes for bringing Golden Sky and Aftershock to our community. I mean, it's a huge economic engine. It's a great place, and it's putting Sacramento on the map. When I arrived from Long Beach on Friday, I saw the airport that was packed, shuttles that were packed, and people that didn't know how to get off the trolley one way or the other. And I'm like, you enter this way, you exit that way. But that's what, like, showed me that people were visiting from out of town, and my airplane was full of visitors for Golden Sky. So just want to give a shout-out to them. And I have a Dia de los Muertos event at North Gate Park this Saturday, so if you are interested, come stop by.
Sounds wonderful. Councilmember Bagueta, are you up? Go, go.
Yes, thank you. I just want to invite everyone out to the annual Spooktacular at Tahoe Park on, this Friday at 4 o'clock. We'll have costume contests. The Sacramento Low Rider Commission will also have low riders there to do a trunk-or-treat with our local low riders. Also, we'll have a lot of our local vendors and artists who are going to be selling some of their crafts as well, and obviously, our local food trucks. So come out to Spooktacular this Friday, 4 o'clock, at Tahoe Park and join in on the contest. We expect all the adults to also show up in costume. All the kids are in costumes, and so are the adults. Thanks again.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I also have AB 1234 reports. Same as my colleague, attended the California League of Cities Conference in Long Beach, was able to do my ethics training and my sexual harassment training, which is, it's a lot easier to do when you're sitting in a room and you're able to interact with other people than staring at a screen. So I really appreciated the opportunity to do that and also learned quite a bit. I was able to, you know, meet colleagues from all over the state, learn about their challenges, learn about some of the policies that they're working on and how those can be relevant here. Also attended, I think it was like the first meeting of, I think it's the Young Electives Caucus, that's what it was. And I think that's really exciting, so got to connect with some others from around the state. So did that. Also, similarly, want to give a shout-out for Golden Sky and for Aftershock. It was really amazing to not only attend Golden Sky. I've never really been a country fan, but I definitely became a fan during this, during the events, and got to learn a lot about how the festival's put on, some of the challenges that they have, too. These really are huge economic drivers for our city and for our region. I think, you know, folks should come out if they haven't before, and we should always find ways to support them because it was just an amazing time with, like, food and friends and people from traveling, traveling from all over. I was really shocked to see, as Mayor Protem Tolamonte said, how many people really come in and get to see Sacramento and what that does for our city, too. When people come here, they probably want to come back again because it's the best place on earth. So with that, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bingham.
Thanks, Mayor. I, too, also wanted to do an AB 1234 report. I also attended the League of Cities Conference in Long Beach and had the opportunity to complete two of my trainings, that's the ethics training and the sexual harassment training. I just want to echo Mayor Protem and Vice Mayor as well, had an opportunity to really connect with local elected officials in the region, but also throughout the state of California. That was really great. And then also, I was appointed as the second vice president of the League of Cities Women Caucus, so really looking forward to serving in that capacity and representing Sac Town in that women caucus. And then just a few announcements. This Thursday at Metaboo at the Pennell Community Center, we're doing our annual Metaboo event. That's going to be a Halloween event filled with lots of candy, activity for all ages. Every year, my team and I always have a theme for costume. Last year, we did Super Mario Brothers. A year before that, we did Power Rangers. This year, we're going to do Inside Out. So each of my team member on Team Heart and Hustle has, is going to be, you know, whether that's anxiety, or depression, or sadness, or joy. So it's going to be really fun. So come out to Metaboo and come check out Team Heart and Hustle. Coach Jennings is looking at me like, what's Inside Out? Oh.
What's the name of the event?
Metaboo.
Metta?
Boo.
Boo.
Yes. Yeah. So come out to that and come check out Heart and Hustle. We got a team costume. I'm really excited for our costumes. And then the 26th, that's this Thursday, is Metaboo. And then two days later on Friday, we have an annual floating pumpkin patch at the Pennell Pool as well. It's from 1 to 4 o'clock, so come through to that. And then the next event on that Saturday, team, we got a lot of events happening in Metaboo. So we also have a movie night happening at the Pennell Community Center, next to the Pennell Community Center. So there's going to be free popcorn, dinner, and that is on Saturday, October 26th, from 5 to 8 p.m. And my team says, turn over the page because there's more. Yes, there is more events. And then we have one more last advocacy session regarding 102 Acres. We've done two intensive advocacy sessions with our residents in the South SAC area. Yesterday, actually, we had a roundtable discussion with local developers in South Sacramento, and then we're ending it with our 102 youth-led advocacy session led by both of our youth commissioners and Savario on our 102 Acres Advisory Committee. So encouraging folks to come out to that. It's about amplifying young voices and development projects. That's not until November, but just want to put a plug in for that. November 13th from 6:00 to 7:30 at John Still K to 8. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Tao.
Thank you, Mayor. Wanted to share some amazing events that were closing out the month, this month. Mountain Youth and Parents United's sixth annual trunk-or-treat event will happen this Friday, the 25th, from 6 to 9 p.m. Mutual Assistance will also be hosting their Harvest Festival this Saturday on the 26th, from 11 to 2 p.m. Have a lot of events in my district, so. I want to thank, you know, our City Parks Department and our Clean and Safe Neighborhood Group. They're out there every two weeks cleaning up the bike trail. They will be out there this weekend, again, Bike Trail Cleanup Pickup Number Eight. They're meeting between Eleanor and Otto's on the bike trail, October 26th, 9 a.m. to noon. We have another nonprofit group, Hike and Hit. They are also hosting another cleanup this Saturday at Hagerwood Park from 10 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. Capital Career and Capital College and Career Academy will be hosting their second annual trunk-or-treat also on October 26th, this Saturday, from 5 p.m. to 7 p.m. So really busy welcome weekend. And then we will go into our Centennial Week Celebration. First off, I would like to thank city staff, Mikel Davila and the Indapt Team, as well as Economic Development and my staff, Council District Two, for working hard to put this together. We, Sacramento is, North Sacramento is celebrating its 100 years, if it's still its own city. And there's a lot of history on Del Paso Boulevard. And so a lot of businesses and North SAC Chamber with the P-Bid step up to host multiple events, and we have eight events next week to celebrate the centennial. First off is, there will be a Centennial Resource Fair on November 2nd, as well as the Taco Fest will be on October 3rd, no, November 3rd following the centennial. But we're going to kick it off on Sunday, October 27th, with Sammy's Restaurant hosting a trunk-or-treat for the youth. On Del Paso Boulevard, there will be multiple events on the Boulevard hosted by, you know, the community. King Kong Brewery will host a Laugh Your Way Through History and partners with some local groups, so they'll feature a local comedian as well. There will be a Centennial Celebration Happy Hour on November 1st at Stony Inn, and then at Tap Wine Lounge on November 1st as well. There's a Vinoverse, an Evening of Wine and World. And so, and Dia de los Muertos, we will be celebrating Dia de los Muertos on November 2nd on Del Paso Boulevard, King Kong, as well as a pop-up event at Tap Wine Lounge. So a plethora of events on Del Paso Boulevard.
Sean, can you pick it up a little bit here?
Yeah.
There's nothing going on out there. What's going on?
Everybody's invited. Everybody's invited to attend. I was looking at it, I was like, many more. I was like, wow, another page. But this is, this is to activate Del Paso Boulevard.
You are a star, man. You are a star, really. I just want to say, I know we're going to have tributes and all that, whatever, when few of us leave and whatever, but I just cannot, I just want to say how great it has been to have Sean Tao. I'm just saying it right now. It's true.
You have a lot of events.
You have been exemplary. Okay, I just want to add my congratulations and thanks to Mike Testa, Howard and the City Team, the members, and Danny Wimmer and his team for another incredible year of music festivals. And again, this is one of these, just look through the forest, through the trees, these are great events in and of themselves. They are also huge signals that this city is quickly becoming a city of festivals, a destination city, a city that's, whose creative economy is just rising, and we just need to keep building on this and building on it and building on it. And it will pay dividends in terms of joy in our city, and it'll also pay economic dividends because this is exactly the part of the economy that is worth a lot more attention. So thank you. Two great weekends. And a triathlon this weekend.
This weekend?
The Ironman, excuse me, the Ironman Triathlon. Yes. Yes.
Mayor, are you going to compete?
I may walk through the starting line, yes. Exactly.
Testa said it would give you a free entry.
A free entry. Yes. All right, let's do public testimony items not on the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. I have three speakers, David Edwards, Elio Moreno, and then Robert Copeland. Is David here? Thank you.
Hello, my name is David Edwards, longtime resident of Sacramento. I love the city. I love this country. I'm happy to be here. I'm here to speak about an out-of-control human neural surveillance system which is being used to harm Sacramento residents. This system is using the established and very real technology known as the microwave auditory effect. Frequencies are being used to torture and physically impair victims to the point they're committing suicide and are murdered or see themselves confined. I want to be crystal clear right now. A covert, established technology called voice-to-skill is being used on citizens who are known as targeted individuals. These targeted individuals have criminals gang-stalking them using this technology. This technology mimics the effects of schizophrenia. Victims are being labeled schizophrenic instead of getting respect and dignity by criminal investigations when they contact law enforcement. Organizations like Targeted Justice and Cystech, for example, are exposing this very technology. Too much for two minutes, but doctors and scientists are coming forward daily. I and others can demonstrate this human targeting technology using a satellite-defined radio kit. I'm saying I can demonstrate proof of this crime and no one will investigate it. Would you consider seeing a crime like this investigated when there's multiple ways to prove it?
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Elio Moreno and Robert Copeland.
Today, I want to bring to light alarming technologies, same as my colleague. Remote neural monitoring and voice-to-skill technology, often associated with what's known as Havana syndrome. These issues were highlighted in a recent Homeland Security Committee meeting on May 8th, but they deserve far more attention. Remote neural monitoring can track brain activity, raising serious concerns about unauthorized surveillance and the manipulation of our thoughts. Voice-to-skill technology can transmit sound directly into a person's mind, causing distress and confusion. As a victim of these psychological tactics, I can attest to the profound impact they can have on one's mental health and well-being. The reports related to Havana syndrome underscore the urgent need for awareness, action, and action. Victims like myself have experienced debilitating symptoms that reveal the ethical challenges we face in an era where technology outpaces our ability to regulate it. It's crucial, it's crucial that we start widespread conversation about these technologies. We need comprehensive guidelines to protect individuals from harm and ensure that these technologies are used ethically by promoting awareness, transparency, and accountability so that we can safeguard our future. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Robert Copeland is our final speaker.
Mayor Steinberg, Sacramento City Council, and the city manager, do you ever check what's going on in your homeless shelters? Because I have a friend of mine has cancer in one of your shelters, and I wouldn't put my worst enemy in that shelter. Do some investigating on what's going on in your shelters. Two, I'm supporting this Governor Newskeep was promised 1 million new affordable housing units by 2030. I don't know if the city council is aware of it. Also, three, Prop 5 and Prop 33, I'm supporting them both. Prop 33 would repeal Costa Hawkins so we can get real rent control in Sacramento instead of this tenant protection program, which is a lot weaker than what we tried back in 2020. The cities of L.A., Santa Monica, San Francisco, and the County Board of Supervisors, L.A., support Prop 33. I don't know why you have not taken a position on it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, I have no more speakers.
All right. Thank you all very much. If there's nothing else to come before the council, we are adjourned.